I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome everybody. We are gonna start off tonight with celebration/ recognition.
We are.
For Peters.
Yes, we have some guests here this evening. So, trying to get to the habit of inviting Craig Semple, our athletic director, sometime after each season to recognize the achievements of our high school athletes. And he has quite a list of achievements from our high school level. It's amazing in a town of 118,000 or so people, the accomplishments of our athletes and our artisans is remarkable. So Craig represents the athletics. We also have a team in particular that we want to recognize with a couple of players and a coach that we all hold in high regard as well. They're working out the details. Craig, yeah, you want to start off with recognition of the program? So for the fall, you're proud of it. In the middle, we can call our friends up to the table.
No camera, so I could just do it right here?
Oh, there's a camera.
It's on, but the boy's not here unfortunately. You can stand anywhere you feel comfortable.
Thank you for inviting us. And it's important for our kids and our coaches to really understand. I always say understand the big picture. And a lot of our kids, you know, they come to school at hand, but they don't realize like a lot of decisions are made right here. And I remind them how important it is that our people here, our Board of Educations who are members, who are volunteers, really support our athletic program. Without you, you know, we couldn't really exist. So we do experience a lot of success, but it's really not what our program is. That's not like our, you know, it's nice to win, but it's not really what our program is all about. But I will say this. I was doing a summary of 10 years most recently because everybody was looking at the decade. We changed over on the decade. And in this past decade, we, our programs, won 60, we were in 60 state championships in 10 years. And we won 32 state titles. And we were finalists 28 times in 12 different sports. So it's a very comprehensive lens.
I think boys soccer won 30 of those state championships.
Four in a row.
In a row.
Four in a row, which is huge. But 60 state titles over 10 years, 32 state titles, 28 finalists, 12 different sports. So our coaches and our kids and our community are getting it done. So thank you for your support. So I'll tell you a little bit about our fall. And just so you know, as a result of that accomplishment, we were awarded what you call the Vantage Cup last year, which is a culmination of all the sports in the postseason. So what we do is we look at how well our teams did in the postseason, all three seasons, and they award points all the way across the board. And then they tally them up and we compete against. It doesn't matter the size of school because everybody is coming from the CIAC-sponsored sports and tournaments. And we were the number one finisher of points for the entire state. We're competing against towns like Greenwich and Darien and New Canaan. And their, you know, schools are much bigger and their towns are much bigger. So these guys, this is an example. These guys work really hard. They get it done. They're tenacious. Their coach is amazing. And they do it in the spirit of dignity and respect. And what I'm most proud of is, you know, they're the type of kids that they're gonna play hard and they're the first people to pick you up, to knock you down. And that's what I love about sports and they exemplify that. So I'm gonna have the coach come up and talk a little bit about their season. It's gonna run through really quickly in the fall, but we've accomplished our girls soccer team. They qualified and advanced in the SEC. And they advanced in the state tournament knocking off the last season's finalists of the Class L championship. They beat them in overtime. And we had four, three girls make All-Conference. Kayla Howard, Chloe Thompson, and Brooke Salutary. And then our boys cross-country team finished 7th in the state. And they were all, we had all-SC Dante Zucanti and Connor Partis Sathley. Yep, and then we had, I'll have Jackie. Girls cross-country, we had all-SC Morgan Combs. And we had our field hockey team, we're a Class M finalist and very close. So close. Two more minutes, we beat that team. And Jackie was an All-Stater. And she also was All-SEC. And we had Maeve, an All-Stater, and Tess and Grace as All, all second-team All-State. So our girls volleyball team qualified and advanced to the SEC in the state tournament. And Ally Nelson was an All-SEC recipient. Our girls swimming was the Class M state finalist. And Kayla Mandanka was an All-SEC along with our relay. Abby, Rudy, Erin, and Ava, they were all in the 4x100 relay. Our football team had an undefeated regular season. They were a Class L state semifinal, state finalist. We had a ton of kids make All-SEC and All-State. And we had a nominee for Gatorade Player of the Year, Colin McCabe. Phoenix Billings was an All-SC and All-Stater. He also was the nominee for Player of the Year. Ben Corneal was an All-SC and All-Stater. Shane Reiner, All-SC, All-SEC. Isaiah McNeely, All-SEC.
Isaiah, you may recognize because he was also our CAF student of the year.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah, he was here recently.
Tommy Bambrick was also an All-SEC recipient. And Ethan Haberman was an All-Stater. And our coach was a nominee for Coach of the Year. And former coach Dee Philppon got the Lifetime Achievement Award from the Walter Camp Foundation. Our boys soccer team is here and they were the Class L state title champions. And I'm gonna bring up Coach Cumstone. He's gonna talk a little bit about the season. And floor is yours.
Thanks for having me. The team went 17, wins two losses and four draws this year. We went to the finals of the SEC Conference Championships. We lost to Guilford 1 goal to 0. We won the regular season title. We were the number one seed going into the conference championships. And then obviously in the state tournament, we won four games to take home the title. And the final game was a pretty enthralling game. It was 1-1 after regulation. Then there were five bowls in extra time and it finished 4-3. So it was a pretty cool game. For these guys, you know, I'm coming in my second year. They had already won two state titles. So the three guys right here were our captains this year. From left to right, Jack Green, Cole Finkie, and Spencer Hartman. And they kind of have this really unique accomplishment of never having lost a single state tournament game in their career, which is pretty unbelievable.
You're all seniors, right?
Yeah.
So all you know is soccer, winning the state championship. Your entire career, that's all that happened to you guys. Amazing. It is an all, second Red Sox conference.
Sorry, sorry.
Well played.
It's important to experience failure.
Yes.
We did, yeah.
I'm glad you did it though.
Some of our biggest learning points this year were from failures that we had, from losing the conference final. A tie that we always talk about felt like a loss. You know, by 3 to 1, we ended up tying 4-4. So those were some of the biggest lessons and some of the reasons why we were able to have achievements. That's a great point.
And Coach Iken, we talk all the time about some of the pitfalls of social media. I was so glad to be able to follow that last game, which was a nail biter even on Twitter. So it was, I'm grateful for that. And it was really exciting. Really exciting. And we got to see your speech and really all the important, beyond winning, all the important life skills that you're able to exemplify for your athletes too. It's just really neat.
Greg's a middle school teacher, HK, right?
Yes.
Greg's a middle school teacher in Haddon-Killingworth. I remember your final interview very well. You brought not just acceptance, a lot of class and professionalism really to the program. And you made good on everything you said in that interview. And I appreciate the integrity with which you carry yourself.
Thank you.
And congratulations, guys. Kind of hard to top this one, man.
With Superintendent Katie.
And Craig, thanks for coming. I would love to have you come every season and tell us all the, even some of the failures. You gotta be in here too.
Yes.
I'll take it, I'll take it here.
Yeah. I know, they're all giants.
Is this a uniform, Tom? Oh, oh, perfect. Oh my gosh.
All right, ready?
All right, I'll take it, tell us.
All right, everybody say, "Go Red Sox."
Now Tom's not gonna smile.
No, just say, "Sorry Guilford."
Craig, thank you.
Thanks again for being here.
He did all the gold.
So hard for him. Thanks, Mr. Semple.
Thank you.
Thank you. I guess if you win four in a row, you get Patagonia.
Patagonia?
Yeah.
A lot of gold.
A lot of gold wouldn't mean that either. I'll take it. Okay.
Jackie, we're one goal away from doing that. One goal, and they pulled one away, you must remember.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was right there.
Or so the other girl kind of kicked one.
Yeah.
Even two more minutes, I heard, though.
Hot till the end, you can't be upset about it.
That's right, that's right. You should be very proud, hold your head high.
Major lessons to failing, to losing. And really are, you try.
Homeschool psychology.
You know how much stronger you're gonna be now?
I would've been there. But like, you're right, you're right.
She smiled so. So we're gonna move on to public participation. Is there any member of the public who would like to speak? Okay, so we're not gonna say anything. We have the student representative report, Jackie. Let's see.
Okay, so last time we were here, talked about the Vodkavre. It was upcoming, but now it's happened. And it was amazing.
I didn't get to go, you might have.
Yeah, it was awesome. I loved it. And they give you food and stuff, it's really fun. And they had their first competition this last weekend, they won, which is also really exciting. So it looks like they'll be doing good again this year.
They were up in Massachusetts, I think, Saturday.
Yeah. Lowell.
They did not get to stay for the awards because the superintendent made them come home before the awards were handed out. But they did get to livestream them and they were all together. And so it was.
It was all over Facebook.
Yeah, it was really, really cool to see them celebrate together.
What was their takeaway? Do you know what their prizes were?
Grand champion, lead vocalist, best choreography. Yeah, that's sweet.
Oh, that's wonderful.
It was awesome.
It's pretty cool.
Other than that, nothing crazy going off of high school. We just had our long weekend from our King Day. And it is most definitely flu season. A lot of people are getting sick.
That's true.
But trying to manage, stay together.
Students and staff, we had some attendance issues, yeah.
Thank you, stay healthy.
Yes, thank you.
Superintendent's report.
Okay, so I'd like to spend the report tonight on a mid-year update on our Effective School Solutions program. So I invited obviously Dr. Vitalia and Cheryl Plankton, who is our official regional.
Well, I was the regional since we started and I got promoted to Executive Clinical Director.
I knew there was a change.
So I oversee Madison, but I also oversee the, all the programs in Connecticut.
So we're five years into this program. We were one of the first in the state. And then New Jersey had a little bit of a history because ESS, the work began there. So I asked Liz and Cheryl if we could just share the data that we review, we do mid-year meeting and end-of-year meeting. And really highlighting the impact on students, the impact on defiance of the board. And then finally, we did add a few vignettes. And I believe your packet has eight vignettes, which I really encourage you to read. We're only gonna highlight three tonight. But when you look at the data, it's one thing. When you read the stories, it's incredibly compelling. So I'm gonna join Cheryl and Liz and just start with the.
I have one, you need a time.
Okay. I don't know. Okay. Thank you. Now Kathy couldn't make it tonight. Oh, and Diane too, both of your numbers. Okay. And we were really hoping to share this with you. That's okay. Just to start off with some basics because the community will see this as well. Yeah. Just the overall mission of the program, just to highlight. We looked at ESS a little over five years ago, right at the time when Liz started. And it's really about the continuum of clinical services that we would like to offer and wanted to offer and that this program does offer. At the time, I think our biggest problem we were looking to solve is that when students at our high school level were faced with some significant clinical, emotional, behavioral problems, that either it could've been situational, it could've been time-bound, or it could've been long-term, we didn't really have a continuum of services that we can point to. And we wanted to extend that. We have school psychologists, social work, guidance counselors, school counselors. But to have this type of program, at the time, very unique really for Connecticut districts. And we put it in place. And the mission has certainly served us well beyond our expectations. The clinical regimen includes daily group therapy for students who are part of the program, weekly individual therapy, family therapy, parent support program. We also have a newsletter, crisis intervention. And really, they're there for responsiveness to any kind of urgent services as well, which we do document in some of the data. There's wraparound for services for students as well. Our clinical therapists can go to the home for some of our kids who are struggling coming to school as well, which we have done a number of times. But really, it's an order, it's a program to get kids into the regular routine at school on a regular basis and to meet those clinical needs. So I'm gonna have Liz and Cheryl go through the executive summary piece, which could really cover some of the data. And we have some charts and graphs as well, but this is a good start.
And we have a lot of data in here. So we're gonna be highlighting some of the things in each of the slides. If you have any questions at the end, just let us know. So I think the biggest piece on this slide is that in combination, the two schools, we decreased any discipline issues by 35% and decreased unexcused absences by 86%. This is looking at try one. And when we give you these percentages, we're comparing the trimester prior to starting in ESS to the current trimester. So we use, again, the semester prior to starting ESS as our baseline information. Since inception, we've worked with 68 at-risk students here in Madison and only three of those needed to be placed out due to their needs.
And Liz points out often when we talk about this, we'll always have students that we just can't meet the needs of in our school setting for variety reasons. Could be, we've had some multi-handicapped students with physical needs. And the same thing here, the continuum will always have that. But to have that retention rate is really quite remarkable.
Right. And since this is sort of the program for students who were in out-of-district placements, we're able, we were able to bring them back so that they could, you know, have the benefits of Darien-Hyan High School, Ian-Polson now. And we talk about having 20 students that we've prevented through the years of needing outplacement due to the supports we provide.
And that prevention, that was done by a case review of each of those individual cases where the team got together and said, ordinarily, without this program, we probably wouldn't be able to meet the needs of those students.
Yeah, so the function of the program is to serve those most at risk due to their behavioral and mental health needs. We provide those supports. We're working to stabilize their psychiatric symptoms and keep them here again in that least restrictive academic environment. And when appropriate, bring students back to the program.
And this has happened when, I know I talked about this during budget time, but when we had a student from Guilford who was an outplacement who moved in last December, the parents heard about this program and knowing about it, went, visited. And now that student is at Poulsen Middle School and was at an outplacement. And would've been at an outplacement if it had yet stayed in his previous district.
So this is a repeat of some of the statistics up at the top. It speaks to the number of sessions that we've had in each category in this trimester, the two schools combined. So you can see we've done 128 family sessions, 333 individual sessions. That group number is one group times the number of students. So it's for each individual session, how many, I mean, each student, how many group sessions they have. So it'll confuse them.
And these students for my school psychologists, my social workers, these couple of students took up most of their time. And so they would, you know, emergencies would come up daily for these students where they would miss seeing their other students. So my school psychologists and social workers love having ESS. When it was coming to the middle school, my staff there was very excited. And we work collaboratively because in terms of school psychologists working and completing the evaluation, so it's really a team effort.
Yeah, at the high school, we set it up so that the learning center is also the location of group. So my staff is in there most of the day, at least one of them. So while they're receiving their academics, there's support for them as well throughout the day. So that's why that 58 urgent sessions is actually a little low. Because I think when they're in there, they don't think about saying, "Oh, that was, you know, a moment where I gave this student support." But you can see that we think we need to save the district at least 29 other staff hours, but I'm sure it's much more than that.
And for me, looking at the improved student outcomes with 35% decrease in suspensions and 84 decrease in absences, those are numbers which are really important to me. Our students are getting into less issues to have be suspended, and they're also coming to school. And we're gonna get more into the savings in detail on another slide.
So this is Poulsen. So for in-school suspensions, there was a 58% decrease in trimester one. The attendance, it looks like there was a crazy increase in unexcused absences, but you can see that there was no unexcused absences and then .29. So it's really like extremely low amount that kids are coming to school and participating. And then at the high school, discipline stayed about the same, but the big number is that we had an 88% decrease in unexcused absences. And the high school, right from the start of the program, there were many, many school-avoidant students, very anxious and unable to come into the building. And there's been a huge turnaround.
And I think this goes to the support from the board two years ago when we put into place ESS at Poulsen. Because now we have a continuum of services. So they're coming into hand with those good habits and strategies. This slide talks about students who had been in home instruction and then had come back to ESS. Also, students who were at outplacements have come to ESS and then have been successful back in their least restrictive environment. This, really on top, what I have highlighted and read, and I know Cheryl alluded to this earlier, we estimate that 30% of students enrolled in ESS program in Madison are at risk of an out, of a district outplacement. And this is so true. There's been so many times where students are, they're going through something and they're having issues, they come in, and they have anxiety, and they can't make it to school. And I would have to then start, if I did not have Effective School Solutions, I'd have to start with tutorial services, which then gives a student who's school-avoidant the ability to stay home and not interact. Where instead, I've got clinical staff that can go out to their houses in the morning and get students to school. So for me, that's so huge. And we've estimated that, this is our fifth year, that there's been 20 students that we've prevented from the out-of-district placement.
And I went through the list of students that we currently have and believe that eight of those students would not do well in Madison schools without the supports that were provided.
Yeah, and so that's looking at a million here alone for those outplacements.
We talked about this already, the savings.
So in looking at the estimated cost savings, so and outplacements can vary. The average that I looked at for students with this profile were about 130. So we took that number and just added a small percentage each year and I can see an increase. Then we looked at those students, eight students that we would've been outplacing. Then kind of taking away, you can see the cost to implement the program. And that cost to implement the program includes the middle and high school plus extended school year. And you can see that the savings that we get every year, besides the savings of educating students in their least restrictive environment with their peers. And then giving them, because they're in their least restrictive environment, they have the ability, when they're ready, to easily go back into special education, regular special education with typical counseling reports, supports, or general education.
There were actually three students after try one that were able to step out of ESS. And again, I think partially because it was an earlier intervention.
Individuets or something, you know, may lose that. As I said earlier, it really does a heck of a job in kind of coloring the context here of what our kids are, you know, their success rates here and their stories. Just for the purpose of the camera, I just wanna, I know you can all read. I just wanna read the first one so if folks can get kind of a handle on it. So we took individual students. In your packet, there are other examples as well for the presentation we have these. And this first student here transferred from another district in 2018, 2019, with significant trauma history. Transferring alone at a high school level is correct. Okay, in addition to other trauma. Student missed substantial amount of school. Last year, frequently spent majority of the day in the nurse's office when they were in school, referred to ESS last May, May of 2019. In an effort to have the services in place for September, ESS worked with the family and the service providers to create a complete loop of wraparound services. This team coordinates and communicates regularly to help the student navigate challenges as they arise. The student has made significant progress despite dealing with significant outside stressors. The stressors don't necessarily go away. It's helping to cope and to work with that. GPA was raised from a 2.16 to a 2.93 and absences reduced from eight to zero. The student's also proud not to be using the nurse unless medically necessary this year. You've got three crowning achievements in there. The GPA, the absences, and the use of the nurse throughout the day, in addition to everything else that I'm sure the student is feeling successful about. So that's just one. But I encourage you to take the packet and read the other ones. To me, that was the most compelling. I love the data, but that was really compelling to me. I appreciate you putting those forward.
I think also it highlights that a big piece of the work that the staff does is collaborating with outside providers and making referrals to outside providers where needed. So we want to make sure that they're stable not only in school but within the community and within their homes so that they can continue to make progress.
So an outside provider would be if some professional who's providing psychiatric care, for example?
Yes.
All right, and if a student is recommended for psychiatric care, who bears that expense? Family?
The family, yes. Yep. But who, the students, maybe seeing the psychiatrist, they're outside psychologists or social workers that they're meeting with. If state agencies are involved, such as DCF, we, the staff from Effective School Solutions communicates with them. Especially psychiatrists who are providing medication. You know, we get releases so that we can speak with these providers. And then there's ongoing communication. If students are ever hospitalized, the staff is speaking to them. And part of the reason they can do this is because they have a caseload of no more than nine students. You know, my social workers and school psychologists have larger caseloads and they're not able to, you know, take this time, I mean, daily. I'm thinking of Bill Cox at the high school is talking to some of these outside providers, which he's only able to do because of the caseload. Do you want me to go through the rest of these or?
The vignettes they have in the back.
Yeah.
So some of our accomplishments, I think the biggest piece is that with the addition of Poulsen, we are intervening earlier. The students are able to develop the skills so that they can exit. I think that when we first started, a lot of the high school students were struggling for many years without the level period that they needed, despite all the efforts. So they weren't, they needed a longer period of time with us to be successful. But we're finding now that people can exit earlier. So that's huge. But we're finding now that people can exit earlier, so that's huge. The other thing is that at the high school, we have a very stable team, not only the ESS team who have been together for two years, but also the teacher and the learning center has been with us. I think this is our third year, and the parents.
Fourth year.
So they're a really great, well-oiled machine in terms of working together and knowing the students, and the students knowing them and being really comfortable. And we already spoke about the unexcused absences being so reduced. We're really amazed ourselves that there were only seven in try one, and so that's huge.
Yes, which is a huge improvement.
Yes.
And that cohort is the largest at 19, what is the capacity?
Eighteen.
But we're doing better than ever.
And at Paulson?
Paulson is nine. And it's around nine. Yeah, yeah, and for the, on the next slide, we speak to the Paulson, you know, it's, we're only in our second year, but I think that we're fully supported in both buildings by the administration and the teachers, and they are, they're trusting the clinician and utilizing her clinical skills.
And I think in both at Paulson and at Hand, there's bi-weekly meetings with the principal, with Cheryl, with the Effective School Solutions staff, with the other relevant team members. Myself is there. So I think having all of the people who make decisions there, and part of a team bi-weekly, is huge to have that for the program. And we go over any issues, and we've got, you know, I've got the head of guidance, I've got everybody who I need to make a decision is in that room. So that, I think those meetings in that time is so valuable to the program. And then just finally, included the satisfactory surveys for the past two years in all areas. The ESS program was rated strongly agree or agree. Again, you have these in your packets, but these are from the last two years.
And we do at the end of the year, I know there's another survey of the parents.
Yep, we might have it even sooner. We usually do it twice a year, and we switched from handwritten survey to monkey survey, and I think that that kind of threw parents off, so we didn't get a lot of responses, but we're going to make that happen.
And as much as the percentages are great, again, I love the comments, the open-ended comments from the parents in the last survey.
I have a couple of questions, I'm just going to not be awkward and be behind you.
I've been to the space at the high school where ESS is housed, where is it housed at Paulson?
It's housed at Paulson down, yes, the science hallway. We picked that location, just like the high school has a separate door and area there. That one, it's a couple, it's like two or three doors down from the door, you could go in that back door. So we really thought about the space when we picked it out. And also, the special education teacher who provides the services, he's right across the hallway. So unlike at the high school, we have a very large room there, there we've got two smaller rooms, but they're directly across the hallway.
And when it was approved two years ago, it was only a two-grade school, now it's a three-year grade school?
Yes.
So do we, or six?
So nine to one ratio.
But, right, but our sixth, sixth grade is serviced.
Yes, my homegrown program PAL that I started my second year, that program now goes to fifth grade, and then ESS picks up in sixth grade. This was our first year of transition, and it went very smoothly from PAL to ESS.
I know they're jam-packed in there, but there's still enough room for my kids.
That's really a good question, if we could start seven and eight, another nine to one ratio, and we're back in third group, that's a good point.
She's busy.
I can imagine. I imagine if we're grateful that we're able to keep these kids here in town and...
We're seeing a lot go back into general education, too, which is nice. We just dismissed a couple at the high school, and that's what we want. We want to give you what you need and then, you know, dismiss you, so then you can be in general education without special ed supports.
I had a quick question about the parent survey. I'm curious if there's anything they say that they would like more of, or are there any needs that we're not able to meet and that might be outside of the scope of the program? But I'm curious if anything parents are asking for that we haven't been able to provide.
I don't think so. We work really hard to have positive relationships with our parents. And so we, you know, the family therapy is at least twice a month, but we'll do it more if there's a family crisis that suggests that. And the staff are on the phone with the parents sometimes daily, but our protocol is at least once a week. So we're giving them updates, we're keeping them informed, we're very often sharing like school information as well as clinical piece.
That's a good question, maybe to ask in the next survey then, you know.
I would say, I would tie that to one of the concerns that we all share is getting more parent engagement in some of the programs. And, you know, maybe a why, you know, why, why would, what would get them more engaged?
Yeah, the parent support groups, yeah.
Well, some of the attendance would tell off on those, yeah.
Thank you. Do you offer workshops for the parents to parenting skills type?
So the parent support group is for that purpose to, it's really whatever they need or want, but we, so we have psychoeducation, but if they, we do a lot of like parenting skills.
And they also provide professional development in the district, so that's part of the tuition to ESS.
It's a great part, this Cheryl, thank you for coming on.
I appreciate having you.
And great work. Okay, just two other items, I'll just do quickly. The South Central Regional Council of Governments is applying for, there's a regional grant that the South Central Regional Council of Governments is applying for, covers two topics of interest to Madison and our schools. One is food waste diversion program, and the other is cybersecurity awareness training for employees and infrastructure assessment. But to participate, Board of Select will need to pass a resolution in support of the application, and Peggy had asked if we could let the Board of Ed know, Peggy lies, excuse me, first select woman, asked if we could let the Board of Ed know, because she's putting it on Board of Selectman agenda. Can you play with any of this?
No.
Okay, well, you'll see.
So this came from her office?
It came from her to Art Cickle to me, yeah. She wants to include an agenda item at the next Board of Select meeting regarding that resolution for the application for the grant, and she wanted the Board of Ed to be aware before it was on that agenda. The food waste diversion program in particular will be a pilot program for composting food waste from the cafeteria at Jeffrey School, and the funding could offset any costs associated with implementing this pilot. The pilot can take on a variety of different forms. With Becky Frost, the principal there, has been included in the conversation about the project, and just wanted to make the Board of Ed aware of that. And the last one is just kind of a little FYI tidbit, there's a really interesting and could be consequential Supreme Court case right now.
Can you put that track for me?
Oh, sure.
The cybersecurity one, what is that one?
It's just, they're combined grant application that we'll be filing for as a town with the South Central Regional Council of Governments. I have no information, just that it is a cybersecurity awareness training for employees and for infrastructure assessment. And that's why, since Art Cickle does food services and technology, because of course those two go together so well. That's why he may be aware, at least we busses into it, just to keep it honest. Yes.
So maybe, yeah, maybe our liaison can get some more information.
I'm on it.
Thank you.
So US Supreme Court, Espinoza versus the Montana Department of Revenue. This is just an interesting one to keep an eye on, because it is a state tax credit program in Montana that offers a dollar-for-dollar tax credit for any person donating to a nonprofit student scholarship, and it's made its way all the way up to the US State Supreme Court, US Supreme Court. And the, there's an allegation that really the legislature is indirectly paying for private religious affiliated schools. So it's under the school choice war that's happening nationally, and there's a concern it will usurp public school funding if it grows. And, you know, there's a, there's an, you know, alleged that this is the camel's nose under the tent, is that a big question?
Oh, dear.
Yeah, so that's what, that's what this is.
It's financial.
Is it a finance, okay, yeah, there, yeah. So I just, keeping an eye, I was reading about it today, I thought, wow, this is a big one, you know, a lot of, a lot of education cases that make it to the US Supreme Court, you know, when they make it up there, they could be very consequential, but this one for school choice.
Initiated in Oklahoma?
Montana, Montana.
Montana, a good place, huh?
So the school choice, you know, war really is where this is between public and private, and the funding and private.
Interesting.
So that's it.
Thank you, appreciate that. Board member comments? So, oh, you went first.
Yeah.
After you, sir.
A couple of things. First, at the CIP meeting this morning, Tom presented the school facilities plan to the, to the CIP, did a good...
Under, we have a CIP agenda.
We do?
Yeah. Move along, move along.
Sorry.
Not to mention your liaison has an update, too.
All good.
No, you're on the agenda, too. Culture, rate your term. Sorry, go ahead.
That's all right. All I was going to say was, he presented and he did a good job, so I'll leave it to...
All in favor.
Sorry, sorry, I stole your thunder.
Try topping that one, Murph. You did a great job.
Additionally, at the Board of Select meeting a week or so ago, the topic of when the referendum on both the school facilities and the academy, proposed academy community center will take place, May is increasingly unlikely. More likely at this point would be either a date in September or in November. And the issues there revolve to some extent around the desire to have a higher voter turnout. And so that's still in front of the Board of Select for discussion. Also, I wanted to mention that the cybersecurity competition, in which the team of young women from HAND last year finished first in the state, is taking place again this year and has already started. And finally, it has become known to me that the son of one of the board members has an award-winning budding film career. So congratulations to Sam Stein.
Thank you, thank you.
It's a good one. Tell you what you jumped on me about.
Moving on. So I just want the committee chairs to know that Wendy has to submit to the Town Clerk Committee meeting dates, they need to be on record. So she's, I've given her the go-ahead to submit those dates, and she will forward those dates to all of you, chairs of those committees. When and if the dates don't work for your committee, just let Wendy know, she will coordinate before she blasts all of our calendars with those dates. So be on the lookout for that. And now we can go to committee reports, curriculum and student development.
We did not meet, no, no.
The play has hit the curriculum and student development. Communications.
We did not meet, our next meeting is February 11.
Facilities.
We did meet last week at 7:00 AM on the 16th. We covered a good deal of ground during our meeting. Bill McMinn was in attendance with Chuck, thank you, from Colliers. And really, three general items that we took a look at. One was we went through a detailed construction cost summary for Brown for the transition from intermediate to K through five. And Bill and Chuck took us through that cost summary. The cost summary basically has five scopes of phases, and the recommendation was to reduce it down to three phases, which would accomplish all programmatic needs and bring it well within. The board approved CIP from September. So that was the summary for Brown, and the committee got a chance to address questions on that. Then Chuck took us through the master plan that covers the grounds from 2019 through 2024. This was done with the framework of, you know, looking at the referendum and the timing for the referendum. So we had some talk about the strategy around the referendum as well. And the final thing that we talked a little bit about, and Tom can jump in as well, was maybe it's our ability of having a site survey done for the Green Hill campus. The goal here is to educate the populace about what is exactly happening. We think we know all the questions that might be out there, but we want to anticipate some. Having a site survey done with a design and a map that we can provide out to the public saying, this is what's happening, might address some questions from different populations that have different questions about fields and fences and water lots and things like that.
Yeah, Colliers is a big proponent of master planning of a campus like that. You know, we have an opportunity to look at traffic flow, entrances and exits up and off the campus. But I think the biggest concern that I had raised at the meeting is that we're going to be moving wall fields around if this were to happen. And, you know, we want to make sure we have plenty of lead time on that and planning so that, you know, all the different interest groups and constituents are well aware and plugged in, and it's predictable, so we can make accommodations around town if we need to while certain things are in construction and so forth.
So to that point, and I'm not sure if you discussed this in your meeting, or if this belongs more in the communications committee, but communications timeline, I'm kind of feeling like we've got to really start getting information out there, making sure people are aware, it's really been since October, since we've sent any substantial information out. Where do you think that should last?
When is CIP's action, do you know, when they'll advance things to the town?
To the town, I think it's March-ish.
Is it that long?
Yeah.
I was going to say, that would be a nice pivot point to say.
Actually, how's the schedule?
That'd be great.
Was that lead, wow.
So I know our work as a committee is done soon, in the next few weeks.
January 30th is our last.
Right.
And won't you vote then, or no, you won't vote then?
So CIP votes, but then it goes to Board of Select.
Oh, I know.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, 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 but I'm wondering if the CIP advancing it to Select and Finance.
So public hearing is Tuesday.
For CIP?
For CIP. So if that's, if that's the marker, then we should...
Find like an opportunity, like a reason.
I know, well, it's, I think, complicated with the operational budget and everything, but I think, you know, as I said, I'm feeling the need to get as much information out to the community as we possibly can. So I don't know if, excuse me, the facilities committee can coordinate with the communications committee, and maybe we can even develop a timeline to start to chip away at some of this strategically.
So the short answer is yes.
I'm an over-communicator, I don't know if you've noticed.
No, but your instinct is right, I mean, this did come up at the committee meeting, so it was in attendance. The better part of the last third of the meeting was talking about communications and the need to get some of the messaging out, the two committees can connect on that. Facilities' next meeting is not until, I believe, February 25th. So, and we talked a little bit about the need to maybe try to schedule something in between then, but we thought, probably do some work in between now and February 25th, so we'll connect with the two.
You mean two weeks, right?
The other, yeah.
On the left?
The communications committee is, yes.
They got the focal point? They get the focal point of the meeting?
Yes, 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 yeah, yeah.
That'd be great. Okay, thank you. Sorry to hijack. Finance.
My turn now?
Yep, you have the floor, Mr. Gardby.
So Finance Committee meeting tonight, discussed the final audit of the school's budget for the 2018, 2019 fiscal year. There is an amount of $143,000 that would be returned to the town. Historically, the school, the Board of Education has taken the opportunity to make a request, and the amount eligible for the request would be 1% of our overall budget, which would be almost $6 million to be set aside. Historically, it has most often been used for the special ed reserve. One year it was used for furniture reserve. The proposal from the administration this year is that we request $65,000 of $143,000 to be set aside, again, in the special ed reserve, which would move the total dollar to be set aside, again, in the special ed reserve, which would move the total dollars in that reserve from a current value of $285,000 up to $350,000. Elizabeth Tagliano met with us tonight. We asked if she felt that was sufficient amount. She said that she felt very comfortable with that amount. Looking back, historically, the maximum outweigh in any one year that is drawn down the reserve has been about $285,000. That was for tuition plus transportation. The average over the last several years has been about $191,000. So $350,000 seems an adequate amount to provide a reasonable safety margin. And so the Finance Committee voted to move that forward to the full board. It's not an action item tonight, it will be at the next board meeting, but I wanted you all to see the draft letter that Stacy has prepared to accompany the request. You can also see on the second page the request form itself, and then the final page in your package is a history of the special appropriation in the special ed fund.
So this is specific for, specifically for outplacement?
It is. There's a Board of Fin, yeah, there's a Board of Finance regulation, about 2009, 2010 it was originated, and it was specifically for outplacement and really for the mid-year surprise of, you know, we didn't plan or budget it.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that would include transportation?
It does include transportation. End of report.
Thank you, any questions?
Thank you.
Kirk? Personnel.
We did meet.
End of report. Policy committee?
You have nothing in front of you tonight for a reading, which means get ready, how much stuff's coming. So we began tonight, and you don't see any, you won't see any of this till the next meeting, but reviewing the 1,000 series of policies that the shipment and bidmen team has reviewed for us, and taking their recommendations. In particular, I think you will see at our next meeting that there are three policies that were moved forward for a first reading, where the shipment policy will replace our current policy completely, that's what's being proposed by the committee, or will be proposed by the committee. We are going to also move forward for a first reading, two policies to be removed per some recommendations, and we will certainly have some discussion about that once you see it. And there will be a rewrite of, of the sixth policy that we saw today, and we will bring it to you in simpler form in a couple meetings. So that was largely our discussion. We are starting to make our way through all policies as described. End of report.
Any questions? CIP committee report. Kirk and I attended CIP this morning, and Tom gave a presentation, it was very well received, appropriate questions were asked. What he said.
Was Kirk there?
Kirk was there.
Okay.
Learn liaison, Diane Snyder here, but she left me with her report from the January 9th meeting, where they reviewed legislative updates, the legislative session convenes in February, and one of the things on the docket is to review later start times, so it should be interesting to watch.
Some of the discussion, some of the local problems around, I'll just call them insensitive mascots and start times, and the districts are dealing with these problems individually, and the legislature is at least discussing taking on those types of problems from a state perspective, we'll see what happens.
Interesting. There was an educational perspective, Executive Director Erickson presented a board member orientation which included information regarding the districts and towns, or the history and the definition of a RESC, Lauren's vision, values and goals, operational revenue information, as well as the governance and responsibilities of the board. And they came up with their meeting dates for the year as well. Any questions on that? End of report. Our Board of Selectmen liaison is a new addition as well to our agenda.
Hi there.
Hi.
So, quick update, I prepared a 100-page notated thing that I'd like to pass out to everybody.
That goes against quick, but.
Three hours. We have a new Board of Selectmen that just got voted in this week, so hopefully you guys all saw that. Bruce Wilson is now back with Board of Selectmen, I want to make sure you guys were aware of that. Mr. Vanish has resigned. We are currently interviewing for an ad hoc government study committee. This is a precursor to the charter review that we go do, kind of relook at how the town works, but this is going to look at sort of different types of government in the town. So a very interesting committee, we have quite a few people interested in participating in that, we're starting to interview for that committee right now. We're also interviewing for the, and I'm actually participating on this, the Island Avenue Future Use Committee. We have 19 people at this point set up to be interviewed, so that's going to take some time for a slot of six, so we're actually discussing maybe increasing the participation on that committee to eight. The Island Avenue lease negotiation, for those of you keeping score, is still underway, and hopefully that will get resolved in the next couple of weeks with some back and forth there. CIP, Tom came to the CIP this weekend, did a great presentation.
So early.
Over 30, Katie, were there, if you haven't heard of our, yeah. I guess the other thing about CIP that I will mention, and it's actually thanks to all of you and certainly for Billy McMinn, there's a proposed facility study on the town buildings as well, very similar to what you guys did for the school buildings, so good stuff there. Budget presentations by all the departments are starting on Thursday, so we are quickly getting into the budget process, certainly CIP as well. I am also the liaison for the Madison Youth and Family Services Group, and they did, and I think they're probably going to be on your agenda at some point here, did the 2019 maid survey, which I was blown away with, and I highly suggest that you spend some time looking at that. It was the first time they'd done it online, and I guess there was 100% of the students take the survey, 90% of the data was leveraged, and some of the outputs of that survey came, they were quite interesting. I mean, one of them was around security, so, Tom, you may have already seen it, but it's fascinating, and I think, you know, certainly around drug use and depression, anxiety, and all the things that impact our students.
Jackie, you took it.
Yeah, Jackie, you took it, probably, yeah, so it's.
Very well.
I asked Jess about it as well. It was, it was great, and I found it very fascinating just to hear the, the input there. Next steps were, I guess there was a student group that went through it this past week. I think all the boards, they're trying to schedule a meeting with all of the, the major boards to go through a reading of that, and then there's going to be a community input as well for that. You guys talked about the referendum, Tom, you still might under on several items here, which is perfect, so, thank you.
Means we're working on it.
I did check with Peggy, by the way, I've been texting her about this, she just found out about it today. There is an action on our agenda, but there's no commitment to that food waste grant, so we're going to discuss it and see what happens.
Cool. And the survey itself was about the 40 assets that we've heard a lot about.
It's the Search Institute survey, yeah, we've done it for five to 10 years now, every other year.
Yes.
Very comprehensive.
And the, to look at the trends, I found fascinating, there's some really interesting trends in there.
Yeah.
Well, and the impacts, I think are, it's a good partnership with Youth and Family that affect our students. End of report.
End of report. I always wanted to say that too, yes, thanks, end of report.
Audience response. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, thank you.
If you turn in the packet to page entitled line item transfers. If you're on call, we now have, we now have a policy where we highlight line item transfers if they are in excess of $10,000. There are two line items shown here. One is labeled teacher to teacher. That entails line item transfers associated with providing for substitute teachers to cover for teachers who are not currently in the classroom. The other is for teacher to administration transfer, and that relates, I believe, to Martha Curran's movement from being a teacher to being an administrator.
Yep.
Makes sense. Can you comment on the, the teacher to, the first one that you mentioned?
No.
You can't comment?
I can't comment, but I'll be happy to get the more details for you.
Okay. So I'm assuming that that.
I can't deal with the second question.
So, maybe, Tom, you can answer this, is professional development, or what is this? Is this Kirk and I?
It's substitute coverage.
Just substitute.
We budget for that in advance.
Okay. Simple.
All it takes is a couple of F M L A leaves for folks to be out for a while, you're in a long-term substitution after X amount of days, it goes from the sub-rate to a higher rate.
I was wondering if there's something.
Yeah.
I debated whether to raise this here, but since it's Kirk's problem, I'll, I'll do it. Technically, I will, I will say from a parliamentarian perspective, if we are going to discuss items that are on the consent agenda, we have to remove them from the consent, consent agenda for discussion and vote, so.
I'm not speaking anymore, somebody calls on me.
But I think it's okay, it'll be okay. Just FYI, if, if we are going to discuss all item, line item transfers in the future, we may not want to place those on the consent agenda. End of, end of parliamentarian report.
All in favor?
Wait a second, I thought that if it exceeded a certain amount, that we were, we were.
We're almost out here.
I think it was permitted that we have that discussion, that if it were exceeding.
It is, we're, we're either way, we are, either way, we are voting on it, but if we want to discuss it, we should put it on the consent.
Just don't have a consent agenda, those should be non.
Ah, that's.
It should just be a discussion item.
I understand what, what you said. Does everyone understand that?
Nowhere.
With that knowledge, are we okay to vote?
Yep, I think so.
Oh, got it. Last time.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the January 7th, 2020 Board of Education meeting.
So moved, second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Sorry, I need a mo, sorry, a motion to approve a $1,000 donation to Ryerson Elementary School, we're almost done, from Connecticut Association of Schools for the Special Olympics and Unified Sports. Any motion? So moved.
Second one.
Discussion.
Yes, discussion, I'd like to.
Thank you.
And we'd like to thank the very generous donation by the United Sports.
Yes, thank you. Check this out.
All in favor.
I'm sorry?
All in favor.
All in favor, thank you.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Full business? Any future agenda items? Meetings and dates of importance are in your packet. I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'm sorry, Katie, I missed, I was a little slow on the mark. We add the, the chair of the breaking committee meeting for February 25th from 8:30 to 5:30 on the 25th, so do we need to add that to this?
From 8:30?
30 to 5:30?
From 8:30 in the morning to 5:30.
Oh, got you.
I love meetings.
What are you guys doing? No more monthlies. I'm sorry, it's cool, Madison.
Yeah.
So you're, just the time is being moved?
Right.
And has the calendar been updated on, on our digital world?
That would be a change to the dates of importance.
Okay, wonderful.
Thank you.
So noted.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, everybody. Thank you.
I'm gonna go.
Sorry, sorry, I'm sorry.
It was ice skating, it was cold.
I know. I'm gonna be late class.